So, good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, October 5th, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll go ahead and do our roll call here for this evening. Commissioner Bowie.
Present.
Commissioner Inghart.
Present.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Present.
Vice Chair Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Manser.
Present.
Secretary Peterman.
Present.
Commissioner Urquia.
Present.
Mayor Turnbow.
Present.
And Chairman Wiggins is here. We have a full house. Awesome. Alright, move in. We don't have any personal appearances tonight, so we will move into item five, our consent agenda, the approval of minutes from the September 21, 2021 meeting. But entertain a motion to dispose of that item, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Faulkner.
I move we approve minutes from September 21, 2021 meeting.
Second. I got two there, but motion by Commissioner Faulkner, second. I think I heard Commissioner Bowie first, to approve the minutes from the September 21, 2021 meeting. Any discussion of the matter? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously, nine zero. Thank you. No unfinished business for this evening, so I'll move directly into our first item up tonight, which is our new business, case 21026, the Fiscal Year 22 through 26 Capital Improvement Program. This does require a public hearing, so I will open that at this time. And with that, I will turn it over to the staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Acting on behalf of Mr. Catterett tonight, we are a little bit on the short-staffed end of things. Mr. Catterett is unfortunately ill with what is going around these days, and so he, I'm sure he sends his best to all of you. With that being said, I would ask the applicant, City of Raymore, represented by Mr. Eke, who is the Chair of the Capital Improvement Program Committee for the city, to give a report on the CIP for 2022 through 2029.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank Chairman Wiggins, as well as all of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, for the opportunity tonight to present the proposed FY22 capital budget. Tonight, I'll be giving just a quick overview of all of the projects within the program fund for fiscal year 22 primarily. The proposed FY22 capital budget includes project funding of nine hundred and nine, I'm sorry, nine million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars for 27 recommended projects, divided among the Buildings and Grounds Department, Parks and Recreation, Sewer, Stormwater, Transportation, and also includes the funding for the transportation geo-bond projects and water projects. Before I begin talking about the projects specifically, I do want to thank a few people. Finance Director Elisa Williams, Parks and Recreation Director Nathan Mustine, Integrated Technology Systems Director Jim Mayberry, Public Works Director Mike Crass, Economic Development Director David Gress, Development Services Director Jim Catterett, Police Chief Jan Zimmerman, and also City Manager Jim Fearborn. Every single one of those individuals throughout the year helped research, develop, and propose these projects to the CIP committee, and it allows us to pull together this entire document that we are able to propose here for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also then for the City Council, and ultimately for the residents at large within our community. As you're following along in your document this evening, I just wanted to point out, mine looks a little bit different. I've been making some notes. Instead of going through the different subject areas as it's presented to you tonight, I'll be going off of page 10, starting at the top at Buildings and Grounds, and talking about each of the projects as I go down the list. I will be kind of noting as I go through each of these projects which page you can find them on within your document. So if you wanted to turn to that page specifically and look a little deeper into the project. But really, we'll just go ahead and start in tonight on all of our projects for fiscal year 22. Starting in the Buildings and Grounds, or the BURP, the Building and Equipment Replacement Program, starting with the first project, it's a facility use and analysis. Our facility use and space analysis is going to be key in the coming years as we begin looking at the expansion of our police department. City Manager Fearborn has talked about building a new police department as we continue to grow. Also, we have conducted our own staffing study that indicated that we do need to continue or we need to hire more folks in both the Public Works as well as the Parks and Recreation Department. As we continue to grow, we are going to need the space for those individuals. This facility analysis will take into account that staffing study to ensure that we have enough space for the folks that we intend to hire in the next five to 10 years. But then also, if the police department were to move out of City Hall, which is located in the basement here, would give us a really good idea of what we could use that space best for. All of these projects, especially this project, really is looking at how we can most efficiently use the space that we have, but also how we can most safely use the space that we currently have and that we may need to grow into. The second project in the list is the Public Works Lobby Security Enhancement. Every facility, aside from the Public Works Department, has the ability for the public to come to a lobby or come to a public space that then the rest of staff or our offices are behind secure doors. Just like here at City Hall or at Centerview, staff is behind a secure door. At the Public Works Facility, at the Operations Building, we do not have that ability, and there's just the one door, if you've been to that building, that can be secure. If we still wish to allow the public to enter the operations facility, which we do have a lot of contractors and members of the public who do go directly to operations for service requests or to speak with folks in our operations department of Public Works, what we need is to secure facility doors as you enter the facility, the two secure doors, and then some security enhancements. Additionally, in this area is also a garage door replacement and repair project. Since the building of that operations facility, as well as the salt dome, as well as the two garage doors here as part of our police department, it's been roughly 15 years, at least here within the police department, that those doors have not been truly serviced or replaced, and then it's been about 10 years since the garage doors at the operations facility have been replaced. This would allow a full replacement of those, as well as some safety enhancements to those garage doors throughout all the facilities at City Hall. And then finally, the last project in the Building and Replacement, or the Building and Equipment Replacement Fund, is the South Parking Lot Lighting. This is one of the smaller projects, but as we've completed this South Plaza here, and we plan on having more events back there, one of the things that we have noticed is the lighting can really use an enhancement, especially if we get more into the, you know, early, early spring days, or we, you know, later fall days, if we are having evening events out there. Having a little bit more of enhanced lighting will help that area there. Moving down to the Transportation Fund, this is where we see the Annual Curb Replacement Project and our Annual Street Preservation Program, two of, I think, are kind of key maintenance programs for infrastructure in the city. The Annual Curb Replacement Program actually comes out of two funds, out of the Transportation Fund, as well as out of the Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. In the Transportation Fund, we are funding this project at $400,000. And then under Stormwater, there's another $200,000 for a total of a $600,000 investment in curb replacement throughout the city. This project, because it is coming from the two funds, can be found on page 60 or page 72, depending on which fund you wanted to look at. Second project, and our next biggest five-year project, is the Annual Street Preservation Program, found on page 75. Out of the Transportation Fund, it represents an $800,000 investment. And then out of the Excise Tax Fund, we also have married to that is the Maintenance of Thoroughfare Routes, on page 78. Both of these projects focus on the recon, or the milling and overlaying, reconstructing of roadways, current roadways within the city. In total, it represents a million-dollar investment in the rebuilding and the repair of our streets throughout the city. Also in the Transportation Fund, on page 77, is the Right-of-Way Infrastructure Repairs Project, another five-year program. This program, it prioritizes the repair of sidewalks, curbs, and culverts as, you know, that becomes necessary or repairs become necessary. An investment of $150,000. And then the last project in the Transportation Fund is the roadside trail maintenance, on page 80, of an investment of $25,000. These are the asphalt trails along the major thoroughfare routes. The repair that in some of those areas is needed, either some patching as it comes up, or some of the crack sealing, as you'll notice, you have some weeds start coming through in that trail. Again, this is about ensuring that those trails are safe and passable for our residents. Before I go forward, I want to make sure there aren't any questions, or I know I kind of moved quickly, but... Very good, we'll jump right on.
One over here from Commissioner Faulkner.
Sorry. Would you mind if we go clear back, just before I forget about it? On the, on the very first page in, just a quick note that in the Planning and Zoning Commission section, Chairman Wiggins is Chair. Matthew Wiggins is Chair now.
I was gonna get to that after Mr. Eke's report.
That's fine.
We actually have those down.
Okay, good.
But we spend so much time focusing on these darn numbers that all the pretty stuff kind of gets left to the very end. But yeah, we have that down to include Mr. Inghart and to change the chair. Thank you, sir.
We'll keep on rolling.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, while we're on this, then on page 10, under Transportation Geo-Bond, you do have Geo-Bond I-39 and 58?
Correct. I had not gotten to that section yet, and so I have that also circled as part of my notes if anyone wishes to try to read my scratch on here. Which, Transportation Geo-Bond gets us right to that section. The Geo-Bond projects approved by voters of Curwell Road and the I-49/58 Highway Expansion Project, as well as the Geo-Bond Streetlight Projects. If you have any questions specifically about these, a lot of this and where these projects are going to end up landing is the initial design phase for Curwell, as well as the streetlight program. With I-49 and the 58 Highway, that is a Federal Department of Transportation grant project. This will be our second round that we have applied for that grant. Typically, we hear results of the grant process later in the fall, and we are anticipating late October, early November notification, if they follow the same schedule they had in the previous grant round. That first round allowed us to hear a lot of feedback from the Department of Transportation that we are able to incorporate into that second round, and so we are hopeful for this second round that we will rank higher and hopefully receive the funding that we'll use those matching funds for in the future. Moving to the Excise Fund, as I spoke about, the Maintenance of the Thoroughfare Routes, on page 78. The other project in this fund is the North Cass Parkway-Dean Avenue Traffic Signal and Intersection Improvement. This is the intersection, as well that we have the Van Trust Project, as well as the North Cass Parkway Commercial Area, a major intersection that is going to need signalization, as well as some additional turn lanes for the traffic coming from the Van Trust property, as well as the development we anticipate in that area. Moving to the Capital Improvement Fund, the Curb Ramp Repair and Replacement. This past summer, we had some really incredible interns in the Public Works Department, along with our brand-new Assistant City Engineer, who actually went and took photos of every single ADA curb ramp in the city and was able to both inventory them, create the paper analysis that looked at the condition of every single one of those ramps, and also was able to provide an online map that not only indicated where those ramps are located, the condition they're in, but also gave us analysis of what it would cost to repair and update all of those ramps. As part of that analysis, much like we do in the Street Preservation Program, as well as in the Curb Replacement Program, that analysis looked at those that were in need of immediate repair, those that needed some minor modifications to bring them up to standard, and then those that just needed some simple, you know, just either needed re-gluing, re-caucking, maybe a little bit of patching. And so as part of that, we are able to look at initial investment of about $50,000 that would really be able to get us started on what is going to become, what we believe kind of an ongoing maintenance project to ensure that those ADA ramps, one, stay up to standard, but two, are also in good working condition for everyone that uses those at those intersections. That project can be located on page 82. The second project in the Capital Improvement Fund is the Operation Green Light Traffic Signal Upgrade, on page 86. This would create or would replace and add six new controllers to the Operation Green Light Project, as well as add three cameras to the signaled intersections across 58 Highway at Kentucky, Mont, Fox Ridge, Johnston, Sunset, and at Madison. This really has been an important project that helps streamline traffic and smooth kind of the traffic patterns at our peak times in the morning and the evening, but it also allows folks, you know, with Mid-America Regional Council, to take a look at those traffic patterns and help us kind of tweak some of those signal timings. And so to be able to upgrade that technology and also continue that project, I think will help with traffic flow along 58 Highway, and will be a good investment. Next project on here, on page 84, is the Sidewalk Gap Program. This is our ongoing effort to continue to connect our sidewalk network, especially in those areas where there's been development in the neighborhood, but maybe there's one or two homes that haven't developed over time. Allows us to connect those areas and also to find areas where maybe just sidewalk hasn't been developed yet, and we need to connect again those areas to allow for kind of a seamless sidewalk network. On page 88, our next project is the Lucy Webb Road Pedestrian Beacon. This would create a lighted beacon that would be pedestrian-activated, just a signal that someone could press, and it would light up with the crosswalk there to connect to the park and the park on the north side, and then the trail on the south side. Last project in the Capital Improvement Fund is the Centerview Video Equipment Upgrade, on page 33. This is a parks program, but this is also a kind of hybrid security issue with what we have, the equipment that we have at Centerview. If you've had an opportunity to be there with the full AV system working, you know that you have the ability to, you know, have a DJ connect to the AV system or have your computer hooked up for presentations. What we've discovered over the years in usage is, as folks rent the facility, sometimes they come with their own computers, sometimes they come with a totally different system that we had not anticipated, or some sort of adapter that they need to work with what we have built into the wall system there. This will allow us to upgrade to allow for proper security if someone brings their own device that they want to connect to the AV system, so they can just plug and play. Also allow us for a little more user-friendly interface as staff, as we also try to provide, you know, high-quality events there that we be able to use the computer system very easily and seamlessly throughout the facility. The next fund is the Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. This is where you find the second half of that Annual Curb Replacement Program. This is also, we're gonna see the county, I'm sorry, Country Lane Stormwater Repair, on page 62. This is a stormwater covert and piping where the pipe has become separated. This would be a quick repair on Country Lane. The Bridge Culvert Cleaning and Repair, Missouri Department of Transportation, every two years inspects the culverts and bridgeways through our streams and waterways. This year, they identified five bridges and culverts that need to be cleaned. Those are gonna be a couple culverts on Hubock Hill, one on Fox Ridge, one at 163rd, and cross, and another one on Cross Creek. These are simply clean-out operations and some minor repair items that was identified by the state that we need to take care of. Moving down into the Park Sales Tax Fund, the two projects proposed for FY22 is the Recreation Park Playground Replacement. This will be the playground area just across from the new playground that had just been installed. This will be specifically for ages two through five, locate, and this project is on page 29. That playground is currently 16, I'm sorry, that playground is 20 years old, has well outlived its life and needs to be repaired, along with the investment of $150,000 for equipment that will be both sensory-friendly as well, again, you know, our commitment to having play spaces that are inclusive. It also will have the new matting, remove those wood chips and have the new matting. That makes it a little safer, a little more inviting to folks, you know, in that, in that play space. Second project on the Sales Park Tax Fund, on page 30, is the Skate Park. A little over 16 years ago, the Parks and Recreation Department solicited donations for that skate park. It has become a very popular feature and attraction in Recreation Park. It has also begun to show its age. There are several repair items that have come up in the last couple of years that, as park staff have been looking at the cost of those repairs, we've realized that it's a wood decking, wood frame. There are some concrete items and metal items, but if we were able to do a complete replace of this entire, entire park area with a metal decking and framing, then it would have a one longer lifespan and also would be safer than having wood bolted on wood, and that way we'd have a better facility that we know we have folks go to. Moving down to the Sewer Connection Fund, this is where we have the Creekmore Odor and Corrosion Corruption Control Project. This is, in Mr. Crass's technical terms, and I had to write this down, it is an activated carbon scrubber. In that area, we'll be installing this device at Bridshire and Creekmore Drive. Because there is a low-flow sewer, that portion of the sewer system is a low-flow portion of the sewer, unfortunately, that means that some of the sewer stays in the pipe and unfortunately can both smell and can be corrosive to the pipe. This odor and corrosion control device would essentially act as a separate filter and pump to reduce any smell and also to ensure that the pipe does not corrode as material moves through. Under the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund, the three projects here, the Sanitary Sewer Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project, on page 50. This is our standard, you know, lining of pipes, repairing of manhole covers, ensuring that stormwater does not cross into the sewer system as required by Little Blue Valley, our sewer provider. That is another five-year project maintenance program. We also have, under the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund, on page 102, the Hydrant Replacement Program. This year, we'll be replacing 15 hydrants throughout the city. These are hydrants that aren't necessarily non-operable, but simply need new valves replaced, you know, just need regular update and maintenance as we go through the system to ensure that all of our hydrants are working throughout the city. And then finally, the last project in the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund is the Mazuma Force Main Replacement. This would replace 350 feet of 24-inch sewer pipe there at Mazuma on 58 Highway. During a routine camera screening and analysis, discovered that some of the pipe had started to corrode, and so it is necessary to have that replaced as part of, as part of our regular maintenance. That concludes the project overview. Certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, want to thank everyone who was a part of putting this program together, and again, remind, you know, those who are listening and everyone that, you know, this project, this program, the Capital Improvement Program, represents, you know, a $9.2 million investment in projects throughout the city and throughout the different programs that we offer at City Hall and through the government.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the Commission have any questions at this moment? Commissioner Bowie?
Just a really quick question that may be, just from my own knowledge of, I appreciate how you laid that out, by the way. Just going down the list and looking at the actual funds, the source, funds, the source of the funds. But can you just give me a real quick synopsis of the priorities, out of curiosity? Because I was looking at the priorities, and I said, there's no fours and fives. Just give me a real quick, and I know they're explained in the GMP, but how was it, how were the priorities, one, two, three, four, five, assigned within the GMP? If you could just kind of give me a synopsis of how that works, real quick. Sure. So as we're looking at the priorities for the individual projects, each project is, as it's proposed, individually ranked. Typically, we're looking at, is it a requirement? Is the state requiring us to invest this? Is the federal government requiring us to invest this? The second that gives it a high ranking or gets it into that four and five range is, is it something that involves safety? You know, we want to ensure that our roads are safe. We want to ensure that, you know, the stormwater is not creating issues on private property or in someone's home. And then following that, it goes through, we look at the priorities through our strategic plan. We look at the priorities through community conversations. Where have we seen these projects mentioned in other plans, including, you know, the Roads Master Plan or Sewer Master Plan? Are we following those plans, and do these projects meet within those goals and those priorities first? Really is how we start to generate the rankings, and then we look at where are we going to be able to slot them into the individual funds? So these are, one is higher priority, five is less priority. Okay. Alright, cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yeah, I didn't want to jump ahead again, but is this a good time for some specific questions about certain projects?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, on page 41, this is just a real simple question, but once I get there. I think the title is Pavilion, and the description says Playground. And I guess that wasn't clear to me. Is it both, or can you explain a little further?
This project was when, twofold. When we tore down the Park House, originally, the plan was that the removal of the Park House would then be replaced with a traditional pavilion. You'd have the slab with some storage and a shelter, essentially. As we built the Raymore Activity Center, following the approval of the first Geo-Bond, we, when we built out that property and saw the potential for the expansion, this project also became a realization of having both the pavilion, as well as a playground space as part of that expansion of that, the rack.
Right. Makes sense. Page 90. So, I actually do travel on Curwell Road occasionally, but I had two questions. I'm not sure whether you're in a position to answer them, since Mr. Crass is not here, but one was, do we know how much traffic is actually there on Curwell? Is it heavily traveled?
As a north-south route, it is heavily traveled, yes.
So I noticed, to go with Commissioner Bowie's comment about priority, this one is rated number one, critical. So traffic would be part of that, I assume?
This also being, yes, as a proposed Geo-Bond project approved by voters, yes.
Okay, so this was, this was specifically listed as an item in that GO?
And was actually listed within the ballot language, so it's, unless we cannot afford it, we have to do it.
No, okay. I think that's plenty to answer my question about that. Page 94, more just curious. I think this was missing the streetlights. And again, this would probably be more in Mr. Crass's area, but do you have any idea why those streetlights are quote "missing" unquote? Were they simply not put in in the first place, but should have been?
We have actually done an entire city streetlight inventory and presented it to the City Council. This is going to be one of those, like our curbs, that is going to take literally years to get up to the current standards for streetlights that are necessary within the city. These are two of the first areas that we're gonna address. They, we are, we are behind on streetlights according to current standards. And so the term "missing" is when they, when they put the streetlights into these neighborhoods, they did not put the streetlights in according to lighting standards that existed then, nor today. So we need to go back and get these things lit. These two areas are our number one and number two complain areas as far as darkness on the streets.
Okay. And I think when you couch it in being similar to curb replacement, it makes, it makes more sense to me then. Thank you. Page 96. I found myself, as I went further on in the individual projects, I found myself asking the same question several times, but I guess I'm curious. North Cass and Dean with the, oh, shoot, names escaping me, but the warehouses.
Van Trust.
Thank you. Van Trust, yeah, on the tip of my tongue somewhere, but... So, was this a case where development could have actually funded improvements at the intersection? Or are they, I guess, not the only ones generating the additional traffic? Go ahead. I think you know my question. I'll let you answer.
This would, this project being funded out of the Excise Tax comes from the fees essentially paid by the development throughout that area. So any of the new traffic being generated out of the developments, those developers pay into the Excise Tax Fund, which is where this project is coming from. And so as other developments come online, they would pay for those improvements necessary in that area.
Okay, well, that sounds, I hadn't quite made the connection full circle. That sounds a lot better to me than the whole city paying for something that was generated by a single development. Okay. I think the remainder of my questions are in the unfunded, and I think typically in the past, when I've asked questions about that, it's like, okay, it doesn't really merit a lot of discussion because it's unfunded.
I am certainly happy to answer any questions, and typically, those unfunded projects have served as a bookmark, knowing that in future years, they remain a priority, they remain something that we are continuing They remain something that we are continuing to either plan for or look forward to. But just unfortunately don't have a spot on the, as a funded project just yet.
Okay, well, just just to mention, and then I think I'm done. The projects on page one thirteen, which was Good Ranch Sanitary Sewer Extension. Page one seventeen, which was Fifty-Eight Highway. Yeah, that's actually not the right one. Page one seventeen, Dean Road Extension. And page one nineteen, Good Ranch Water Extension. My my question on all three of those was kind of similar to the question I asked previously about how come development is not funding more of this? And I I think if if your answer is still going to be in that same vein, that's a good answer.
It is, it is very similar to that. The reason we have these on the radar with the CIP group is the anticipation that in some way, manner or form, development is going to have to pay for these. But we don't want to lose sight of the need that is going to be there when the development occurs. So we obviously put them in the unfunded because we have no intention of that being on the taxpayers.
That sounds very smart to me, and thank you both for the good answers.
Any additional questions or comments from the commission?
Chairman?
Commissioner Arquilla?
Just curious, unlike the streetlight project and like the side and the sidewalk projects that we kind of talked, touched on, is there a way kind of like we can see on our website when people can see what projects are happening? Is there a way to also track the streetlight projects and the sidewalk projects?
Yes, with the GO bond project specifically, we have a page identified for updates for all of those individual projects. Streetlights specifically, we are anticipating design to begin at the end of the next fiscal year. And so we'll have more information specifically about the timeline as well as location. As for, let's say, with sidewalks, typically what we do is as we begin to bid those projects out and identify which areas for the next year that contractors will be working on, we we post those out. I know our communications department gets very busy with everything from sidewalks to road preservation to the curbs, getting all that information out and ensuring it's on the website as well as on social media, but yeah.
But is it like interactive, like the the projects?
Or yes, as well as on the current projects map, yeah.
Okay, and then on the sidewalks, I know you're connecting like areas where there's missing. But have you ever, have you looked at any streets where there's no sidewalks at all?
Yes, that is part of the the overall analysis, is looking at those, those, and there are several right now that we're looking at that have, you know, it's it's roadways that just never had these segment even contemplated that that can be constructed after the fact.
Yeah, because yeah, there's a couple in my neighborhood and I've had, I know a couple of parents are like my kids, like for the bus, they don't have a side. They wanted them to go down the corner, but there was no sidewalk for their kids to to traverse to even make it down to Sunset or Park. So I was just curious about that as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir, please.
On the on the revenue side, can you just real quickly speak to, you said that in terms of revenue here in the packet, I think I read a couple of days ago that a hundred and there were a hundred and seventy-five new starts or something for residential. Tell me if I'm getting that right, I think I have to find it. But has the pandemic affected that, the thing that was going on with the COVID stuff? Has that affected new starts? And is there any anticipated commercial new starts that is going to add to the revenue?
We have not seen in terms of new starts, the pandemic, aside from a possibly a tightening of supply for develop or the builders. But in terms of the construction of homes, we have continued to see a pretty steady, pretty steady build out. Same with new developments coming online. I know planning and zoning has seen several that have already come through for approval here as well as at the city council level. And so we know that future development is also continuing at about the same rate. Have not necessarily seen a slowdown, and as we indicated in the revenue section in that area.
Okay, you said no new commercial. I found it says no new commercial or industrial starts are contemplated in these proposed capital budgets. So is that still holding true as we move forward? Or are there going to be new commercial starts that's going to affect the revenue?
As far as, if I could back up just a little bit, as far as residential starts are concerned, Mr. Catterett may have reported to you all that we're in kind of a lag right now because we have built out existing lots that are in. But we have a number of, as you all have seen, I think with the first three, over the course of the next ten years, and you're going to be seeing some other, another two come before you, we would anticipate that the number of single family lots in the city over the course of the next ten years, just with the ones that are before you all, have been before the council and that will be coming to you in the next couple of months, which are obviously aren't being built on yet, it'll be a couple of years. But in ten years, we would anticipate between a ten and twenty percent single family lot increase in the city, which is pretty darn good over a ten-year period compared to some of our surrounding cities and definitely shows a growth pattern continuing for us. From a standpoint of commercial, if it is not actually being built and built out, conservative budgeting does not allow us to include that as a potential permit revenue to the city. So what the council sees when it comes before them, and I've alerted to them to that many times. An example is they are grading for phase two down at Van Trust. In fact, they just finished the last of the blasting down there on the highway side this morning at ten thirty. When that goes in, when they get done with all the grading, they'll start pulling permits. They haven't pulled permits yet. So I can't budget, I was unable to budget it in this year, cannot budget that revenue, permit revenue in next year because I don't know, something could happen and it just falls dead. The other reason I would not budget it as revenue is because it is a non-recurring source. We're not going to get another million square foot warehouse anytime in the near future. So I have to consider to one time, what does that do? It balloons available fund balance that the council then has the ability to use for one time and one time only projects, which they were actually contemplating just before this meeting and their work session tonight. What to add, what not to add, being very, they're very, very cautious on using those available fund balances. Want to be using money that's coming in, especially when it's developer money that's coming in. We want to be cautious about what we use it for, but we cannot budget it as recurring cost for projects like this until such time as the council directs us. Okay, well, this looks like a one-time project that's not going to create recurring maintenance. And so let's put that one in, and they do look at that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, that was a good explanation.
Any final questions or comments? All right, thank you guys very, very much, which appreciated. With that being said, I guess since this is a public hearing, we will take the opportunity to allow the public to come speak. Seeing none in here, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Fearborn, are we still, are we going to table item B or are we going to just still discuss that this evening, sir?
I believe you will need a vote to recommend the capital improvement program on to the city council.
I guess, you know, those cases, they usually do require motions and all that, so.
So Chairman, on that note, if you'll allow me, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the CIP as presented this, well, with the few little amendments to the first page and to page ten as as mentioned and outlined for approval.
I believe you'll be recommending approval for that.
I'll second it.
And the case number for that is two one zero two six.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and end a motion approval of case number two one zero two six, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six capital improvement program with the noted edits to the document.
Thank you, and a second. Very good, so I have a motion by Commissioner Kea, a second by Commissioner Bowie, to approve case two one zero two six of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six capital improvement program as presented with corrections identified. Any discussion on the topic?
Well, that would be with a recommendation.
Oh, with the, yeah, I think I said that at the very beginning.
Commissioner Kea.
Yeah, recommends approval of case number, yes, sir.
You all don't approve, you all recommend.
All right, any final discussion? If not, all those in favor? Seeing all hands are up, it's past nine zero. All right, sorry, now appropriately, will we be tabling item B this evening?
We would ask that you postpone case number two one zero two eight until such time as Mr. Mustin, who the parks department is the applicant for that particular case. Mr. Mustin is suffering from the same thing that Mr. Catterett is suffering from and could not be here tonight. We would ask that you postpone case number two one zero two eight until the next regular planning and zoning meeting.
Thank you, sir, which I believe is the nineteenth, so we will anticipate that on October nineteenth, unless we hear otherwise from city staff.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into our city council report for this evening, please. Would you like to give it?
Without Mr. Catterett being here, I will defer the city council report.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm happy to provide the city council report. The recent city council meeting occurred on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. During the course of that meeting, there were a number of items that came up that you all had the opportunity to review and consider for purposes of being able to kind of identify what the council did with those once you passed them along. The first item was the second reading of the Ridgeview Estates rezoning, that one was approved unanimously. Other items of interest are all fall under, all fall under the first readings for the city council. First reading of the Madison Valley rezoning, that was the rezoning from R one to R one point five. That was approved as the first reading. The next item that came up on the agenda was right after that, the preliminary plat for Madison Valley. That's going to be done by way of a resolution. So for purposes of the city council's action, they postponed that until they get the second reading of the rezoning from one to one point five. So the preliminary plat will prospectively be approved or considered by the council next week after they vote a second time for their second reading of the rezoning portion. The last item that came up for the council consideration was the first reading of Alexander Creek Third Plat. This is the fifty-five unit, single family lots that was previously approved by you all. The first reading was approved by the council by unanimous vote as well. That would conclude the city council report from my perspective. Obviously, we have city manager, Mr. Fearborn here, Mayor Turnbo obviously able to provide any additional input if there's anything they think I may have missed.
Thank you very much. Would we have a staff report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would ask city planner Dylan Eppert to make the staff report.
Okay, so first of all, Mr. Catterett, he sends his regards. He does not have the staff or the the September monthly report done that will be presented at our nineteenth, October nineteenth meeting. As far as for upcoming, what you all will be considering will be the Thirty-Fourth Amendment to the UDC, Creekmore Seventh Amendment to the MOU, minor plat for Stegmyer Acres Lots Three through Five. And then obviously with tonight's motion to postpone, it'll be a Hawk Ridge West site plan.
Very good, thank you, sir. Moving into, or I guess are there any other departments within the city that have any presentations, sir?
That includes staff reports tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Public comments section, seeing no public, I will give an opportunity for anybody happens to be out in the lobby. Seeing none, we will move into commission member comments. And I think I'll start on my left with Vice Chair Pfizer.
Okay, well, first I'd like to thank staff for preparing everything for this evening's meeting. I thank you guys for your presentation. It's nice to see what's coming ahead in the city. I wish everyone good health. Having experienced the same illness a year ago, it's not a lot of fun, but so I hope everyone heals quickly.
Commissioner Faulkner, please.
Thank you. First, I'm sorry to see that we are missing several key members of staff and hope they recover quickly and with least amount of difficulty. And thank you to all of you here for the support. It's good to see that things can keep on running in spite of the occasional difficulties. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Inger?
Also like to echo, thank you. I spent a lot of time reading the capital improvement plan and I'm impressed with the effort and behind it and look forward to seeing some of these actually transpire in our community and hope it goes well. Thank you.
Secretary Peterman?
Thanks to staff, thanks for the update, Mr. Eke. It's interesting to go through it step by step like you did, I thought that was pretty good. Thoughts and prayers for all the ones that are off with illness. That's all I got.
Commissioner Kea?
Echo the sentiments of those this evening for speedy recovery for those that aren't here this evening. And Mr. Eke, thank you so much for your presentation, we'll have to have you back next year, make this a regular occurrence for you. And of course, for your presence tonight as well, Mr. Manager. Other than that, as staff, as always, appreciate all you do.
Commissioner Manser?
Just wanted to quickly thank the staff, thank you guys.
Mayor Turnbo?
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
You bet. Commissioner Bowie?
Nothing in particular, thank you very much, appreciate your presentations, God did a great job.
Thank you to members of staff for being here tonight and presentation. I thought it went very well and I definitely liked the format kind of moving through the way that we did. Hope that everybody continues, that is present here tonight continues to be well and those that are at home sick, that they get well soon and can join us again. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion by Commissioner Kea, a second by Commissioner Manser to adjourn this evening's meeting, all in favor? Unless there's a discussion, nope, nine, nothing, thank you, we are adjourned.